Better go? Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order our Monday, September the 24th Annual Board Meeting. Would someone please read the approval of today's agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, September 24th, 2018, Board of Education Annual Meeting, be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a motion?
I'll second that. This is a roll call vote. Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Bortading.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Vice President Humbles.
Aye. Next, we move to the Board of Governance, governance, excuse me. Are there any questions, concerns with the minutes from our September the 10th meeting? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify with aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. The minutes stand approved. So now, I'm going to be turning the meeting over to Laurel for our election of officers.
Thank you. Tonight, at our annual meeting, we will be selecting a presiding officer of the Board of Directors, and at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations. Nancy Humbles. Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Mary Meisterling for Vice President.
We'll do Vice President after the President.
Oh, sorry.
But thank you.
Okay.
Any other nominations for the presiding officer at this time? All right, if not, then I will declare the nominations closed, and because we only have one individual who has been nominated for the position, we'll do this by roll call vote. Director Bortading.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
And Vice President Humbles.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Nancy. If you'd come forward for the oath of office.
Do you, Nancy Humbles, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Office of President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Should I move on?
You may move on.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for entrusting me with this position, and I am very honored to be the president of the school board, so I want to thank you for that. Now, we get to conduct the election of the Vice President in the same manner as the President. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the position of Vice President.
Okay, I'll do that now. I, I, I'll figure it out eventually. I nominate Mary Meisterling for Vice President.
Are there any others? Then, I guess, Laurel, do we?
You would do a roll call? We'll declare the nominations closed.
The nomination is closed for Vice President.
And now, we would do a roll call vote.
And a roll call vote, please.
All right, then Director Anhalt.
I'm sorry. Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Bortading.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye.
Did I get everyone? All right.
Yes.
Congratulations. Director Meisterling, if you'd like to come forward for the oath of office. Please raise your right hand. Do you, Mary Meisterling, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? Please respond by saying, "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your support.
Now, I'd like to introduce Dave Nicholson, who will provide us with the financial highlights for fiscal year 2018.
Thank you, President Humbles, for a nice welcome here. First of all, I want to give credit to Steve Graham and Sherri Lewski and the rest of the county staff, and also all the other managers that oversee the budgets of our district, since we, it's a great financial position what we're at right now, so. So we'll just go forward here. And again, as I said, I thank President Humbles and the rest of the Board, and Dr. Buck, I'd like to, you know, go through the presentation now and see how we did for the year. All right, revenues. We actually brought in $275 million of revenues, and of course, the general fund is our largest of revenue source, and followed by SAVE, and then Debt Service, and PEPL, and then Food Service, then our, actually, it's actually not Food Service, it's Management Fund, followed by Food Services, kind of rounds it all out. And then when you look at, and when you compare that into last year, we're up about $5.1 million compared to last year in revenues for all of our funds. For expenditures, we are slightly less expenses than we had in revenues, that's, we pretty much have about, expenditures are about 96.8 percent of overall revenues, and a general fund difference represents probably, it's about $2.4 million in expenditures less than revenues for the general fund. And some of the, one of the other ones to kind of point out would be Management Fund. We actually spent, brought in about $9.3 million in revenues and only spent $7.7 million in expenses in Management Fund. General Fund, that's the one that we really like to focus in the most about, and it's the one that we get more concerned when you're looking at unspent balance and all those types of things. For the general fund, our total revenue is $207 million, and 56 percent of that comes in from the state, followed by 38 percent from local revenues, and then it's rounded out by federal and other revenues. General Fund expenses, of course, salary and benefits is the largest piece of the pie, like normal. This year, it's about 81 percent, which is, you know, pretty close to what all schools across the state run. They're run probably between 80 to 84 percent probably of salaries and benefits of their overall budget. And then our services is $20 million, and one, one point I want to point out is the other uses, line share of that other uses is AEA flow-through. That's about $7.7 million is AEA flow-through of that $8.00 million, $8 million, so. Point that way, sorry. Unspent balance and fund balance here. We have a pretty nice trajectory, if you look at our unspent balance and fund balance. Unspent balance, we went from 15.15 million to, I mean, 11.15 million to just over 15 million this year. And our fund balance, which is kind of cash position, we went from 31 million to 33.8 million. So a nice increase there, and if you look at our fund balance versus unspent balance, it doesn't seem, it seems kind of out of line there, and that is mainly due to cash reserve levies that we're trying to increase the cash position. But generally, I think you would like to have fund balance kind of mirror a little bit your unspent balance, but, but, you know, like, if you look at here in 2009, it's pretty, fairly close, but now we're, we're trying to build up the unspent balance in the future here, so. Now, if you look at percentages, ratios here, the Board, it's my understanding, has set a goal to have in a range between 5 and 10 percent, and for the unspent balance, and we are in that zone. We got in there last year at 5.6 percent. This year, we're at 7.3 percent, about right in the sweet spot, right in the middle, is where we're at today. And our fund balance, our cash position, is about 16.5 percent. The maximum amount that you're allowed to have is 20 percent. We're getting close to that, and we grew that about, you can see that, just 0.7 percent is how we grew that this year. And so we are, you know, in the right, in the white sweet spot, and, and unspent balance basically is, is generally, how we increase unspent balance is generally from cash reserve levies for special ed deficit, ELL deficit, open and roll-out deficits and those. That grew about 1.2 million this year, those SBRC deficits. We also, the other way you end up increasing your unspent balance is underspend your budget a little bit to help grow that unspent balance, and that's, those two things contributed to why we grew. Solvency ratio. You can see the nice trend here, we're going upward. We're about, went from 13.65 percent to just under 14.74 percent this year for our solvency ratio, a nice, strong position here. And one of the good things with solvency ratio is, it's one of the things that Moody's looks at in giving you bond rating, you know, a strong solvency ratio helps us maintain our, our nice bond rating that we have today. Activity fund balances. You can see the history here, we look like we have a pretty strong position in activity fund. We went from 1.43 million to 1.54 million in activity fund. Our SAVE funds increased slightly from 5.99. We knew we were going to spend that down in years past. This year, it kind of upticked a little bit, kind of mainly for somewhat timing of payments that we're doing, played into that a little bit, and also, we are being very, making sure that we try to keep the saved money available for our future projects that we want to have, that we know it's on the docket here. And I do want to mention real quick here on the SAVE fund, we are approaching for availability of dollars, looking long-term until December 31st, 2029, when the sun sets, we're approaching $60 million. I don't have the exact figures right now, because I'm still working out the details with Tim Oswald. We kind of go back and forth in numbers. I didn't want to present you with something unless I knew. I felt really good about the numbers that we're at, but I know we're approaching about $60 million. I think we were about $54, $55 million last year. I think we're approaching about $60 million available funds when you look forward. Daycare funds, you can see that, that's increased just over $1 million fund balance, strong position. Debt service, we're still sitting really good. We're at about 14.4 million, I mean, 7.4 million. Management fund, we took a pretty big jump this year in management fund. We will probably be looking at our fund balance on that and maybe scaling back a little bit our levy for management fund moving forward, if we can do that, and because we're sitting in a pretty good position right now. And management fund, as I say, is used for unemployment, early separation, and our property casualty insurance is where that comes into play. Our PEPL fund, you can see we grew that from 6.17 million to 7.18 million. Nutrition fund jumped up from 2.83 million to 3.44 million. And our outstanding debt, our legal limit is $482 million, which is calculated based on 5 percent of your overall assessed valuation of your district, and as you look in 2018, we have $103 million of outstanding debt, and so we are well within our debt limit of 482 million. And we just had one of the, of our bonds, actually, we made the last payment last fiscal year, so we just finished that up, so that was good. Any questions?
Any questions on the board? Pretty positive, yes, great report.
Yes, it's, it is a great report, and considering how we've improved our financial situation over the year. There are several districts in the state that aren't doing as well, and one of them is a, is a large metropolitan area. I just wanted to point out, because you never know who the audience, we may have some, some new people. When we look at the, the unspent balance and our fund balance, even though we have $16 million in, in fund balance, that's not, we don't have spending authority on it, so people looking at it, well, gosh, why can't we hire teachers? Why can't we, you know, lower class size and do all, you know, other kinds of things? And because of the way our funding works in the state currently, we don't have authority to do it, to use it.
Yeah, yeah. Another reason why you have a much larger fund balance at the end of your, and then you might have a spending authority on spent balance, is cash flow. If you want to make sure you have cash flow for the summer months, because the state aid only comes in 10 months out of the year, you need to make sure you fund those July, August wages, and that's in part of why you need to do this. And also, you know, everybody is a little fearful when you think back when we had the 10 percent across-the-board cut, okay? And at that point in time, you needed, you got that money cut, you needed some additional cash to be able to make payrolls and those types of things, because you were under contracts for a lot of things, you couldn't get out of it, so you also built up a cash reserve levy, increased those to, built a fund balance, so you could actually weather those storms when they do happen, so. But yeah, you're right, it's, it's not true authority. The number we really need to be focusing on is unspent balance, and that's the number that we need to watch. If you look back in 2000 and, what is it, 2012, it was getting quite low, and so, in getting us closer to the 10, I would feel much more comfortable being close to the 10 percent than closer to 5 percent, just because, if you can see, in one year, we dropped in one year, looking back, we lost basically 5 percent we dropped in one year. That's a pretty big drop in one year, and it can go down really fast, so that's why when we're looking at the Board goal of 5 to 10 percent, I would probably feel more comfortable closer to 10 percent than I would at 5 percent as an unspent balance.
Also, and I never get all of the acronyms right, but we, we generally have gone to looking at adjustments in our spending authority for special ed and the state agency. Just became aware that there was a district that applied for adjustment for security measures and was, was granted approval on it, so just if, if that was something that we could possibly use, we have a precedent that's already been set on that, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
With no further business for our annual meeting, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Monday, September the 24th. We just completed our annual business meeting, and we are now moving forward with our regular school board and work session. Would someone please read the approval of today's agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, September 24th, 2018, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
This requires a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a roll call?
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Bortading.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Buck will provide us with the superintendent's report, and then following Dr. Buck's report, we will have time, we'll make time for Board members if they have reports they would like to share too.
Thank you, President Humbles. So some news of note, we received exciting news last week that we're one of 10 schools and organizations selected by Iowa Workforce Development to receive funding to grow registered apprenticeship programs in Iowa. So awardees will each receive $10,000 to create or provide ongoing support for a quality pre-apprenticeship program, and the first one we're going to invest in is Milrite. So about this important work supported by the award, Governor Kim Reynolds said, "This commitment to growing Iowa's skilled workforce in high-demand jobs using the registered apprenticeship model is an important strategy to help us meet our future-ready Iowa goal. It also helps keep the cost of higher education down, and students are able to earn money while training for a rewarding career. We're thrilled to be receiving this award to better serve our students and deliver on the vision of every learner future-ready. In keeping with the theme of apprenticeship programs, we're very excited about the progress currently being made on this year's Student Build House by the Building Trades Class. At this point, construction of the basement is almost complete, with first-floor joists being installed later this week. This new class of students is doing a wonderful job with its new instructor, Dan Lowe, who's in his first year replacing Dave Smith, who retired last year after 20-plus years of teaching the program. It's a valuable Cedar Rapids Community School District offering, and we're thrilled the progress is going so well. As you know, our extracurricular programs are remarkably vibrant, our marching bands are no exception, and on October 6th, Jefferson High School will be hosting the 2018 Iowa High School Music Association State Marching Band Festival at Kingston Stadium. This is a wonderful opportunity to hear from a variety of bands across the state and cheer on our very own CRCSD musicians. And finally, here, we continue to develop new opportunities to engage and form our community with work underway in our district. Last month, we launched Community Coffee and Conversation, and look forward to hosting that event again in October. We'll continue to promote those events, as well as SCHOoled, a new evening series of dynamic talks on public education and our role as difference-makers in the lives of the students we serve. The inaugural event is on October 10th in the Whipple Auditorium from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, and features Jackson Elementary Principal Nick Duffy, Garfield Elementary 4th Grade Teacher Darcel Pledge, and Metro High School's Kitchen Manager Kristy Boards. So we're looking forward to that.
Are there any Board reports?
Yeah, I have something that I'd like to distribute to Board members for consideration before our next meeting, and that is our 2018-2019 priority sheet, which we had reviewed. I have a proposal here that we would amend it. The 2018-2019 priority sheet that we, that we approved, listed some of the district's strategic plan actions, but not all of them, so I have proposed a couple of inclusions so that we can be intent in our reflection of the intercultural mindset, the focus on intercultural mindset, future-ready, and our future-ready story. The other actions are specifically the dots between our strategic plan and our priorities already included, so that would be workforce, learning, and facilities. Thank you. So, sorry, blanking. So I have this to distribute, just for review and consideration, I believe that we will look at it at our next meeting.
October 8th meeting? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other reports here?
Yes, IASB Exec Board met last week in Des Moines, and just a couple of highlights on it. First of all, the decision was made to have, continue to have the Fall Conference at the same date in 2019, a year out, and the reason why that was made or importance is because of the elections, school board elections, there was some concern whether or not the IASB would, would hold the Board. So we would have new members that were elected within maybe two weeks of the conference, but it's going to mean a lot of work for IASB staff and so on, but they, we will, at this point, for this, for that year, we'll give it a try and continue with that same, so you can kind of think a year out. Along with that, they're suggesting that that information be included in any handouts that go to potential Board candidates when they file with you, Laurel.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they'll, will probably have a packet or something.
The packets always, always include that, so this will be, just to make sure that we put that up their front, so that they know right away.
Right, they know.
Yeah.
And it was, you know, we've got plenty of time to, to work on it, but maybe holding, if possibly, holding a reservation ahead, and it could always be canceled, but just to ensure that that opportunity would be there. The importance of the training for new Board members, new presidents, they will, will continue to have a, a new president's meeting, but it won't be a separate date. Typically, it's been on the Friday after the conference. They're going to integrate it into the, the conference, if, what I, I understand.
Yeah, because the annual meeting for the Board wouldn't be held until December, so the new president wouldn't be elected until after the conference.
There was some discussion about the implications, and I think we've already talked about it statewide, with the move of the election, but some things that we can start thinking about is the cost, we share the, we pay for the cost currently, now it'll be a shared election, and how that'll, you know, how that will be prorated out. As I pointed out, we thought that it would be used as a savings, but it actually could cost us more because we were only, we were only funding for four sites, and now it'll be at 25 or 26 sites, so. But again, it's only a portion, too, so, just something that these, the county auditor will have to, and will have to work out. The legislative priorities have been proposed, and they mirror very closely to what we submitted. The four priorities will be mental health, resolution to support to establish comprehensive community mental health systems, school funding policy, support school foundation formula that provides a little bit, does a little bit more than what we have right now, supplemental state aid, again, setting in and on time, and so on, and then the fourth one is SAVE, continuing. So those are proposed, that we acted on at the Fall Conference. Want to point out the opportunity for Board members, the regional training by IASB will be October 16th, Tuesday, out at Prairie, it's, Laurel, if you're interested, Laurel can register you for it, it's, I think, at the middle school, but I'm not sure, it's on the registration form, but that's October 16th, and it's always, it's a good refresher, it's a, it's a good program to review some of the things, the trends that we're seeing in funding, and, and so on, so that's good. And lastly, to point out, some of the resources that are available to Board members online, there's a whole part on, we had a nice report on, on fiscal, but they have broken out by district, financial focus, and there's all kinds of additional information that you can access online, available only to Board members with your, with your log on, so I would suggest that you take a look at that. So I would suggest that you take a look at that. And I guess last, I'm going to the Labor Management, Labor Relations Conference that IASB is having October 18th in Des Moines.
Thank you. Next, we move to communications, delegation, and petitions. Do we have any?
Request to speak today?
Since there are no requests to speak to the board this evening, we will move on to our consent agenda. And as part of our consent agenda, do any of the board members have any items that they would like to pull for separate discussion and/or voting consideration? If not, do we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda as presented? And this is a roll call.
I, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Director Burchardine.
Aye.
Director Anne Halt.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
President Humble.
Aye. Now we're moving to tonight's work session regarding the SET Task Force Grant Program update. And Dr. Buck will provide us with the latest information and requests. And following our discussion, the board will be asked to vote on the recommendations as presented in our agenda. This will be a voice vote. Dr. Buck?
Great. Thanks, President Humble. So you have two documents in front of you related to the Safe, Equitable, and Thriving work. So the first document that you have in front of you is the one-pager, and it has objectives 1 through 5 down the side. I set that on your, it looks like this, if that's helpful. And so I put that in front of you to remind, so if we just click back a step. So a group came together, and really, the initial impetus was around decreasing youth gun violence. And then as we dug into the complexities of that issue, really expanded into the Safe, Equitable, and Thriving Task Force. So now there are a number of people in our community engaged around that work. Raphael would have been there, Rod would have been there. I'm trying to think. Carlos did work there, Paul Hayes. Several from our, our group are part of that. And so an initial task force report came out, and there was a page in there related to education objectives. So this is just a review and reminder of where we've sort of been and where we are to this point. Five, those five items emerged, and you can see them on the document that's in front of you. We just pulled them out. And so Objective 1 is related to college and career readiness. Objective 2 is around student attendance. Objective 3 around constructively correcting student behavior. 4 is reducing bullying and violence. And then 5 is intercultural competencies. So I say that to say that work began in the original task force and persists to this day. So we remain committed to the work that was described in that original report. And it's to the tune of about $300,000 in investment. So we are invested in this work, and we see it as priority work. The good news is, things that we had intended to work on dovetailed nicely into this. So it wasn't really added expenditure from the perspective of a new set of expenditures, more so investing specifically around things we believe would deliver on the Safe, Equitable, and Thriving concepts as it relates to education. Is that sort of a fair contextualization of where? So from that point, city, county, and school district leaders began a conversation about, so what is next beyond the original SET Task Force? And so what is next beyond the original SET Task Force? It's the document that's in front of you tonight. And that document in front of you tonight starts to lay the groundwork for a grant fund at the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation. So the three entities in partnership with the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation are putting a proposal forward that would have, begin a process for grant funding. And so I won't go through every single item in this packet of information that's in front of you. So essentially, the concept is some monies will be put into place, and those monies will be used to either begin some work that we believe is most likely to extend the SET work and/or amplify existing programming. So there's a couple of ways at least that this might come into play. So the funders, and the funders would be the city, the county, and the public school system. That's us, Cedar Rapids Schools. The funders got together, and the concept is there'll be a policy committee. So if you look at page 2 on that second document that you have, basically, it's an 11-member policy committee. Each of the funders will select two committee members, with one of those having participated in the original SET Task Force to incorporate the knowledge gained through that process. Then beyond those two per funder, there'll be five additional members selected by the group to also be a part of the policy committee. And then as you read through that document, you can see the responsibilities of the policy committee, set the process by which the committee has selected the outcomes and intended design of the application and scoring tool. So basically, setting up the infrastructure of the grant program. And then beyond that is the actual grant committee. So the grant committee will be responsible for reviewing the applications once they come in and making funding recommendations according to the guidance provided by the policy committee. That group will also be an 11-member group, with each funder naming one representative, and then eight additional members will be selected. And they will be on three-year terms. And then I think the intent will be to start to cycle people off so that you have capacity built over time. So as those members change, you can get people back cycled on. So there's always some of that ongoing sort of institutional memory as a part of that group. So you can see what they're responsible for, committee member training, grant application review, et cetera. And then funding priorities, you can see next what those are. There's talk of, there'll, there's likely going to be a blend of some larger grants and maybe even multi-year grants, and then some potentially smaller grants. But we'll need to see what comes in once the fund is established and the community set up. We have joint agreements related to publicity and how the publicity will occur, joint agreements on reports and evaluation. So the Cedar Rapids, the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation will actually sort of hold this work and lead and provide oversight in terms of reports and evaluation, and make reports back to the policy committee intermittently. So the staffing there, you can see the staffing is there. The recommendation is a halftime program officer who reports to the senior VP of Programs and Community Investment at the Greater Community Foundation. And then there's a, a general outline of the, the timeline for implementation. So there's hope that the fund will be about $250,000 annually. The school district portion that we've informally agreed to, and the board will need to, to discuss and decide tonight, is $25,000 annually for at least three years. And I think we do it for three years so that they understand there's ongoing commitment to it. But also checking along the way to see, is this doing what we intended to do to help drive on the goals related to our Safe, Equitable, and Thriving community? So I think that's kind of the overview of where we are to this point.
Does anyone have any questions or seeking additional clarification?
I have a question. So the $25,000 that would be granted to this, is that in addition to monies that we're spending on other support programs? Or would support programs then be applying for monies through the SET initiative?
What other support programs?
Oh, like Boys and Girls Clubs?
Oh, this will be in addition to. So we have a, we have a standing RFP process in the district, and, and that's LBA and the Academy and others.
Right.
Yeah. So that will still exist on its own as our system. The 25 we're putting in will be beyond that into this fund. Does that make sense?
It does. It does. Will programs that we are funding separately from this be eligible also to apply for funding through?
They'll be eligible to apply. Yep. At least, that's what I understand at this point. The policy committee will tighten all that stuff.
Sure. Right.
But I would say informal conversation would say that's, that's likely.
Any other questions?
Well, just a comment. I, I really appreciate the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation for stepping up and becoming involved with it. That we've known all along that these are community issues, not just related to the, to the school itself. And the, the community needs to, and they're a great, a great resource, not only with financial, but also their expertise. Actually, they're going to help with some of the writing and supervising. So that's, I think that's a real positive step forward. And yeah, I, I have no qualms about this. I think we should move forward.
Yeah, their technical experience will also be important here. They understand grant programs. They run group, they, I mean, they're, they're good at this. So yeah, I agree, Gary. Good, great partners.
How are other committee members selected? Is there a set of criteria?
Yes, I don't think that's been established. You're like the next five in the policy committee.
Yeah.
Yes, I don't think that's been established yet. My sense is if and hopefully when all of the, the three entities approve this, we're likely to pull together the six initially, the two from each of the groups, to talk about what the, the process will look like, to identify the other five, and then we'll go from there.
And so there's two committees. So there's the grant, and then there's the policy. And each will comprise 11, 11 members on each.
Are any of the other partners collecting data for goal-setting? So like, is, are the city, Cedar Rapids, and Lynn County collecting data for achievable goal-setting? That, I guess what I'm, what I'm kind of wondering is if, if we have the flexibility to be able to try to align with our data collection so that we're not collecting data from the same entity in two different ways to achieve the same goal?
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna, I'll answer it this way, and then just tell me if additional information or different information would be helpful. So in the original SET Task Force, the city committed to work as well. So they are investing in the items that they invested in, and they're collecting data on the things they said they would do in the original Task Force. And then, of course, the county has significant work underway with mental health, county health. And they're very good about collecting data across those points. So this may be an opportunity to actually aggregate data differently than we have done in the past by getting all of these partners at the table and thinking about what metrics matter to each organization? Is there overlap or gap in that data set? So I think it might actually be an opportunity to get better at that.
Right. Right. Sounds like it. Okay. Thank you.
So we need to take a vote on this, Laurel?
Right. So the recommendation tonight is that you would look at, look at the proposal that had been a part of your agenda, and then based on the information that Dr. Buck had shared along with the financial resources of the $25,000 for three years, would be what we would be asking for you to consider approving this evening.
So do I make a? A motion? A motion to accept the recommendations presented by Dr. Buck?
I move to accept the, the recommendations for the Safe, Equitable, and Thriving SET program as presented to us.
Have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call?
This is just all a favor with the voice.
It's all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn tonight, I'm asking everyone to keep the Laberty family in their prayers and their thoughts and prayers. I pray a lot for Ann, his wife. So I just wanted to mention that, that we, John is not here, and to pray for those that do pray. And then also to remember to take your, for the board to get your school calendar. That's provided as part of your agenda. And with no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you.